All the meetings are ordered, roll call please.
Anthony Mills?
Here.
Mr. Andeland?
Here.
Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. McQueen and Abba. Mr. Verrill is on Zoom, does it matter?
Ian.
Notice that this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News and Courier News file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and supplemented on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three to change the start time to six thirty P M. Please stand and pledge the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the American Constitution of America. And to the following principles. While here, I declare the governor to be a criminal. Okay, bear with me, I have this required reading I have to do. So, welcome to your August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in bar and hall, and it is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinance. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be included in a report by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive or vain or indecent language or language positivity and hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expense of their three minutes of allotted time or if they make any interfering with more offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their names and addresses before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body in attendance. Failure of a governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technology, electronic devices, or computers during the course of the meeting that affect removed senior individual participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Okay, let's get out of the fun style. All right, we are thrilled to have the new sergeants, and I'm going to turn in front of our chief and let him do the honor.
Right, let's swing it like I always do.
Yeah.
I'll just say, this process was an exciting one. We interviewed five or six officers from these positions, myself, Lieutenant Bardisso, Captain Vitello here, Lieutenant Belitsky. And I would say, and I think they did great for me, is this probably the most competitive round of promotions that we have been involved in here. Great group of candidates, and that just speaks to excellence in Tyler and Dean, and I'm very happy to be able to talk with both of them tonight. I'll start out with Tyler and Mark first, who I hung up. He's accompanied, I believe, his wife, Deanna, and the daughter Scarlett are here, and his mom, Dad, and some other family members are here tonight. Tyler's been, I mean, it sounds funny to say, I've been here for thirty years. Tyler's been here for four years, going on five, and it does not really, the timeline you've been there doesn't seem to buy up. I've already done this on offer, and that's true for you. Tyler, for the last year, is a runner detective hero. They did it basically by himself, he's a very good lieutenant in the job, and the way you performed in the role is why you're here today. I'm getting to know it, so without further ado, I'm going to let Anthony and whatnot do this thing here.
Look around as much as we can.
I honor the motto, "The solace we have, the pride we have, the solace where that supports the constitution of the United States and the state of New Jersey, that I support the concrete United States and state of New Jersey, that I will give to the nation, that I will give to the nation, and to the government established in the United States and in the same, if we don't make that issue the United States, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people, that faithfully and partially and dutifully, with my own duties of sergeant, and that faithfully and partially listen for all of your decisions, according to the best of my ability, according to the best of my ability, and that I will not use my office, and I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment or receive personal gain, favor, or advantage."
To grant preferential treatment or receive personal gain, favor, or advantage.
Not available to the general public, so help me God.
Not available to the general public, so.
Before I introduce the speaker, I just also want to mention, one of the positions being built tonight happened due to the retirement of Sergeant Tay. Sergeant Tay was with us for over twenty years, Jean Volte. Couldn't be here tonight to join us in these ceremonies, but I just wanted to take a moment on record to congratulate him on his retirement and thank him for his time here. Pete Archibald, another one of our really solid candidates. Pete came to us from University of Rutgers, who was a full year before coming here. I believe his wife, Marie, is here tonight with children, Jack and Mackenzie, and his parents are here, and some other family members. During his time here, Pete has really, he's evolved. I mean, over the years, it's the Washington, and where he's come to now, it's been a pleasure for me to watch. Your leadership qualities are really, I think, very important, just to be strong, you're very showing yourself. You're a really good leader, and he seems to be looking up to you. He's one of our field training officers. He also does some training in first aid and arnoury and things like that. So I think Pete's going to gravitate to this role and do a great job, just like Tyler does. So I congratulate you, and.
I, Peter Archibald, "The solace we have,"
I, Peter Archibald, "The solace we have,"
that I will support the constitution of the United States, state of New Jersey.
That I will support the constitution of the United States, state of New Jersey.
That I will bear truth, faith, allegiance to its name.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the thing.
As the government established in the United States and in this state.
The government established in the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I will not use my.
And then I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment nor to receive personal gain, favor, or advantage.
To grant preferential treatment nor to receive personal gain, favor, or advantage.
Not available to the general public, so help me God.
Not available to the general public, so help me God. If everybody can come and support the officers, and they have a big share.
You don't miss.
The meeting. Yeah, yeah. Maybe a little bit, very little bit.
No matter where you're at.
Hi, I don't need to be in the front row, I got enough of that.
Yes. The next one is, thank you very much, from the state of New Jersey. I believe you is not only a member of the borough, but we know that. So Sergeant Pete and Sergeant Tyler, we want to thank you very much. And this is from the state senate and the state family, thank you very much. Thank you so much. Great job, congratulations. Next, you're going to invite our Assemblywoman, Matzakouris, to just give us an update on the stage, we'll sit the little X on the floor. That's where you have to stand. I know.
My name is Michelle Matzakouris. I'm one of your favorite representatives from District Twenty-One. Very soon in November, you'll become part of the twenty-first legislative district. And right now, that is Senator John Bramick, Assemblywoman Nancy Munoz, and myself, Michelle Matzakouris. We've already been working hard at work, working closely with your mayor and council to try to achieve some goals and see where we can be of help in your town. Also, we're working very hard down the track. We've got a number of laws that we've been able to pass. One of them happens to be a law that is helping veterans that leave the military that are medically trained more quickly become nurses, there's a nursing crisis. God knows if you've been to the, I forgot, I was at the emergency room with my mom about a month and a half ago, a poor woman had a leg on the gurney for, I cannot even tell you. And we said, I have, because we've been everything to her. So this is one small step in the direction of trying to help with that kind of crisis. The other thing is, it's one of another bill that we managed, that we got turned into law recently, and we, it's had to do with stalkers. And if you're familiar with anything, it's very difficult to find your trademark if you don't know a person or something. And now, because of this law, you don't actually have to formally know the person. Part of that, you had to have a relationship with them. But if you think about it, with social media, someone could be harassing you for a nurse without actually coming to physical contact. So we're very proud of these two bills. Again, we're working real close with your mayor and council, and I just want to let you know that our office is open and available. My office is in Providence, which is, you know, about twenty minutes from here. So now we had office hours, mobile office hours. We brought our office here to town, and we do hope to do more of that. And what we specialize in is helping you with anything you need statewide, right? So any kind of constituent services, we take great pride in that. As a matter of fact, my office has recovered over five hundred and sixty thousand dollars since I've been elected, and we are ecstatic. And it's all been in the way of things like disability, excuse me, disability claims, insurance benefits, things like that. We also help more vehicle news. We have a known area on staff, so if you need help with that, we can help you pay you charge. Anyway, just glad to be here, introduce myself, tell you a little bit about the work that Senator Bramick, Senator Munoz, and myself are doing. And thank you so much, I look forward to seeing you all real soon.
Thank you. Thank you so much, great work. And thanks for using our building here for.
It's a beautiful building, we're happy to be here. We'd love to come out.
It's historic.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, take care. Thank you. Okay, we have minutes to approve from June twenty-sixth. We're having a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June twenty-sixth.
How's that?
All in favor?
All right.
opposed?
Abstained.
All right, we do now have an open session for anything that's not listed for a public hearing. So if anyone in the public would like to speak, please give your name and address, stand on the X if you're here in the building, and we give comments to three minutes.
My ex. Hi, I'm Charlie Brown, resident attorney for Eastville, thirty-one Tower Mountain Drive. Just here today, thanks for everything you do, Mayor, members of the council, the mayor of town, so great. I'm a dad of a couple of kids at school in St. Elizabeth, and school has been discussing for some time now, last few months, with the police department, the possibility of adding an S E O or a law enforcement officer to help safeguard our school. And so just here today to ask that when that process completes, which I believe was initiated formally last week, a request was made to Chief Remin, and Chief Remin is speaking with Principal Walsh, maybe tomorrow, I just saw the chief. Right beforehand, it's extremely supportive that you all take that under consideration in the next appropriate council meeting, and we'd love your support just to make the kids of our school safer, and Burnsville State in general. A bunch of the families in the school have got together, and there are lots of other public and private schools, we're doing this scenario, and we wanted to say for our kids, a couple of, a few of us dads come here tonight to show support for that, and we raised money to support the wages of that security officer, that S E O, it's very important support from across our community. Well, Burnsville, welcome to get even better this year or so. Appreciate everything you can do, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, that's a great idea, actually. Yeah, thank you for taking the initiative. Okay. Excellent, anyone else wish to be heard? Anybody on Zoom? Small crowd. Okay. And then I will close the open session. We'll give back. Let's see, this is. Well, fine, this is. We don't have chats. We don't have chats.
Yeah, you're, I'm sorry. And you were saying, Brian, all the orders.
That's.
We're trying to think of the back. We'll get to that.
Wait.
We don't have.
Oh, yeah, okay. No, no.
No.
So. On the ordinance status, did I really pin it up?
Yeah, we do it, because the meeting is not as per six thirty.
Right. What we give you, we have any, we can do an introduction.
Oh, yeah, we could do the introduction there.
That's just the one for the drive through.
Exactly.
You said everything you should do, so.
Correct.
Yes. I move that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen seventy-six, prohibiting drive-throughs in the downtown zone district and supplementing and amending Article Twelve of the Borough Code entitled "Zoning." Be introduced by title, as on first reading, published according to law in a public hearing scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven P M. Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Awesome. Can we make that the first meeting in September?
For change in.
Yeah.
We showed you what we can.
So, which is.
November eleven.
Eleven.
November eleven.
Well, that would be going some days back. Yeah. And just in, as we're doing this, we have been in the application process to be designated as a transit village. Being a transit village gives us opportunities for a lot of grants and support from the state to make improvements in the transit village area, which is considered a two-mile radius around the train station. This was the last piece, we met every other request in the application. Last piece was to not have any drive-through, any kind of stores or banks or restaurants or whatever with a drive-through. We did have in our ordinance, drive-throughs were prohibited, but we had an exception for pharmacies. So what we're doing is taking out the exception, so there are none. Of course, any that are already here will be great follow. So this was the last piece, and now they can review our application, and hopefully we will someday get that designation. And so that's why we're doing that one tonight. Did we do a voice vote? All in favor? I don't know. Opposed? All right, resolutions, we have, what do you, twenty-three, one forty-two to twenty-three, one fifty-nine? From any that we want to talk about separately, under one fifty-eight. One fifty-eight, I just have two questions. Are they going to use on the opening signs at the entrances to trails that signify the powers of the hunting? That's number one. And also, can we require that they remove all equipment within two weeks of the end of the season? I mean, that is a state directive also, I believe. We've never done it.
And we also got an email from Jeffrey Hammond asking that we had a provision saying that the hunt was protected in accordance with the year management plan. He said we need that.
Yeah, to keep behind the state of New Jersey.
Right.
Okay, can we, how can we make sure of all those things? Well, if one is state regulations, is that the removal of your equipment, do you say? I believe that there's something in the state about that. We've never done it, we've never made anybody joke. Have they left stuff? They leave the blinds and the heaters in the, in the, yeah.
So that's within two weeks, you'd say?
Within two, within two weeks.
Right.
At the end of the season. Yeah, we can. I mean, they can put it back after the next year, it's, you know, they don't need to leave it there, but they have them leaving, not this group, but the previous group. Yeah.
There are the four, yeah, I will read.
I put, to put a sign up, there's a name, because either, either they should do it with the borough, but somebody needs to take ownership of, making sure that the signings are put up. Particularly if you have trailheads, yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So we're adding three things. So we're adding three requirements, one, you remove equipment at least at the end of the year, the season. Two, that they put signs at the trailheads, warning people.
Yes.
And three is, we are happy, according to the year.
Year management plan, yeah. You're two seconds too late, Jeff, you just did it. Thank you for reminding us to do that.
Well, quite well.
Yeah, so we added that. I'm the, I don't think that's, any other resolutions? All right, so who do you want to move them? I'll move that resolution, twenty-three dash one forty-two through twenty-three dash one fifty-nine to adopt. Roll call please.
Mr. Andeland?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yeah.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Verrill?
Yes.
Mr. Samara?
Yes.
Yeah.
I was not hearing.
We can't hear you, Rob.
Okay, yeah.
You can ask the top one here.
Yeah. Still not seven o'clock, so we'll keep going. We'll suffer through a wire report. Mayor's update, on July eleventh, thank you, Olivia, organizing the meeting with New Jersey Transit. We had, what, four or five, more than that, representatives from N J D to meet with us, Nancy was also there, and John McDowell, looking at what's our part, what's their part, what needs to be fixed, how they can help us, you know, getting the garden done, how much room. You know, we talked about the outside dining for the train station, so they have been extremely helpful. And they've been following up, yes, yeah, which is great, so we'll keep that relationship going. I did attend at the library, thank you, Brad, the reading of "The Gilded Frame," Maggie Water, got a signed copy. If you're interested, that is a book, it's a fictional story, but it's set in historic Somerset Hills. He did a tremendous amount of research using the Somerset Hills, what is it called, the T H? I can never get all their initials right, but the Historical Society of the Somerset Hills, I think that's it. And did tremendous research, so to get a good sense, especially for the centennial, want to get a sense of the history of this area, along with a murder story. Get a copy, I think the bookworm has it, and Amazon has it. Nancy and I met when Chris Colling.
And we have to.
Oh, they were checking out. There you go. We met with Chris Colling to go over the last piece of the transit village, so that's what we did there before. I've been participating in the library's strategic planning process on the engaging the community goal, which has been very, Louis is also on that, has been really productive, some great ideas, so thank you for including us. I officiated at my ninth way on the fifteenth, held it across the state gardens, and I have to confess, I have lived here fifty-one years, I have never been to the cross the state my first time, I will be back. I don't know why, I never, I just never got there. We had a meeting of the mayor's wellness campaign committee. Leah Horowitz and Susan Visser from Community in Crisis have completed and submitted the mayor's wellness campaign mental health initiative grant. Hopefully, we will get that so that we can bring some mental health programs to our young people. We've also created a survey for seniors, and we're going to start distributing that at the senior barbecue on Thursday. We had a visit on July eighteenth from Main Street America to review how we're doing here, and the feedback was very positive. And they gave us some good ideas to get even better organized and be moving forward, so that was a great, a great day, thank you, Olivia, for that. We had a centennial committee meeting on the twenty-sixth, and we now have nine designs submitted for the logo. Really good stuff. So we're, the committee is going to bring it down to three, and then we'll have a little public voting on them. So let's see what becomes the centennial logo. I attended the Somerset County DLC luncheon, which is put on by the Business Partnership, it's the Legislative Committee, and what they've been doing is bringing different mayors to talk about the towns and what the business environment is like. I did the meeting last month with, with P Mac and Bedminster, at this time was Branchburg and Bridgewater. Ladies' night, same night, the twenty-seventh, that Main Street Burnsville did was a phenomenal success. Matter of fact, there's a woman that I was playing pickleball with that I saw here that night, and she said she keeps telling me every time I see her, how, I think she lives in Bassam Ridge, but how terrific it was, she started at the spa, you know, and did the whole thing, said I spent way too much money, and she already booked an appointment at the spa, so it really has helped our businesses tremendously, so even the spa, people told her they didn't expect the kind of turnout they got, so thank you, it was a great event. We had a mayor's wellness camp day at the recreation camp, which the police, the fire, the first aid were there. Community in Crisis did a little mental health thing, and then they did a little physical training, so then they, at the end, they hose the kids down with fire hoses, so they had, I think, twenty-minute segments of education on mental health, physical health, safety, so it was a great day, I bet. National Night Out, of course, on the first of August, another successful night, really packed. I don't know how many of you were there, but it was a really good turnout, a lot of defenders and a lot of good information. We, did I do this, or did you do, no, I think it was just me. On the third, the Highlands Resilience Project Ogesberg, I sat on. Municipalities are now required to do a vulnerability, the vulnerability assessment. So the Highlands Council is trying to create guidance, because this is going to be quite an undertaking. I know the planning board is already looking into it, but every municipality is going to have to do this based on the increase and the degree of storms we've been having. I'm on the Conference of Mayors Housing Policy Working Group. We had our first meeting on the ninth. What we're trying to do is come up with some proposals for new ways of looking at affordable housing. What we're trying to do is come up with some proposals for new ways of looking at affordable housing. That hopefully we can pass on to the legislatures, legislature to just find a better way, um, to deal with affordable housing, so. Um, and then, of course, Thursday, we had the Power Project Architects presentation. Uh, anybody watching, if you didn't see it, it is on our website, so you can either look at the slides or, um, watch the whole meeting. Uh, hundred and ten people, I think we had of that, so it's great to see the community coming out to keep up with what's happening in our town. And that is my report, now it's seven o'clock. Did Chad get us?
Yes, he did.
Alright.
Yeah, ma- mayor, I apologize, I, I headed my calendar with seven o'clock as normal, and, um, thank you for texting me, Jean.
You can't hear.
You can't hear me?
I hear you, Chad, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I can hear you, Al.
Now, it's time to put this out of the speaker dial, and Al.
So they can't hear us, either?
We can hear you.
Yes, we, yes, we can hear you.
I'll just text Nancy and let her know.
Yeah, Al, we'll, we'll vote with thumbs up or thumbs down. Does work?
No, Chad, we can't hear you or Al.
Don't worry about it. Forget about it.
There's a mute, is there a mute button on it? Go on the library channel one time. There's a, there's a microphone mute button on the front, I don't know if it's on or off.
This one here. Like, check, test, test.
Test one, two.
They can hear, they can hear each other, because they just want that.
Yes, we can.
They just can't hear us.
Is the USB, it's connecting them?
Yeah.
Loose maybe, it's on the floor down there?
Like Gladiator.
I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen seventy-one, bond ordinance, providing for maintenance to municipal property in and by Borough of Burnsville. In and out of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriating one million seven hundred thousand dollars there for, and authorizing the issuance of a million six three thirteen bonds or notes of the Borough for finance and such appropriation. Okay, anyone in the public want to be heard on this bond ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, Jay, why don't you lead that one?
Uh, yeah, I can't, but we just got the, I don't know if you can hear it, I'll check, Al, check, new thought?
Yeah, can you hear us now?
Can you hear us? Yes?
You got us.
Yeah, alright, good, there we go.
Sure, I moved the pass ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen seventy-one on the final reading, and adopt is published.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Alright, roll call please.
This is Eric.
I'm staying.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Rube?
Yes.
This is McCready?
Yes.
This is Greenfield?
Yeah.
Brennella?
I'm staying.
Okay, um, the next one is on the accessory dwelling units, and based on the recommendation of the planning board, to make this non, to remove the non-performing.
To remove the conditional use of the brand?
The conditional use, that's it, remove the conditional use. Um, and it was a good point they brought up, because right now, even though they're allowed to have it, they still have to go to the planning board to get, go through that process. We want to take that out to make it easier for the residents to just go through the zoning office and do your application that way. So we'll introduce it again next.
Yeah, I, I suggest we move to continue this until September eleventh meeting with no. Permanent notice of.
Yeah.
And I'll have a notice, I'll have a new ordinance ready for the next meeting, because the ordinance is changing a few words. So, I have a new ordinance ready for introduction for next meeting, which will make it a permitted accessory use.
Okay, excellent.
Thank, thank you, Jack, I'll, I'll move to continue it to the next meeting.
I'll second. Uh, September eleventh, yes?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that's just an all in favor?
Hi.
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 Alright. Um. I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen seventy-five concerning outdoor dining and amending Article twelve of the Borough Code entitled zoning. Um, and I know we had some input from, um, the green team and about, uh, adding outdoor smoking and vaping, so I believe we're gonna discuss that at the September meeting, and then we can amend it, like, I think we, um, these are mainly maintenance-type issues, and then next meeting, we can discuss and add those other issues.
Yes, yeah, I, I recommend you adopt this, because it will put these regulations in place, and then we can add those.
Okay, Jeff, did you want to talk about this at all, or?
No, excuse me, uh, uh, what?
Yeah, we have the public hearing, so.
It can flip my court, no, actually, I just came to recommend the green team, and uh, as a correspondent by email, I think that's fine, if, if you want to, um, because of your agenda, uh, consider this at the September meeting, that, that, that would be fine, um, both from Community Crisis that volunteered to have, people can come speak if you wish to support that as well, you can let me know, but other than that, yeah. That sounds like a plan to me.
Well, that's the new.
There's on, it's all. I, I checked out, I don't have it.
Jeff, you had language, by the email, you said that you had language from another other towns?
Yeah, so there are other municipalities that have, that built into their.
Could you forward that to us?
So we can do that.
Or, yes, and to Nancy, yeah, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, lady was one, oh, gosh, and walking on the other one, so pushing, pushing, uh, to the, I'll, I'll get it for you.
Thank you, yeah, that's very great, thanks for making Jack's jobbies here, do we currently have anything?
Anything to make your jobbies?
Do we have any ordinance about, uh, smoking on public property?
Yes. Right, that, that actually goes to the other thing that I, I'd like you to consider in September, and that's the, the re- re-size on public property, and I sent you that, uh, I think you could email to, you and some members of the committees that would be relevant to, um, we can discuss that September as well, so that tells public properties. Obviously, dining is, is private property, but, um, it does have some significant health with risks.
Great, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, anyone else want to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, uh, I moved pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen seventy-five on final reading and adopt as published. Roll call please.
Brennella?
Yes.
Does Greenfield?
Yes.
Does the Green?
Yeah.
Does Rivera?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
This is Eric?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're jumping back to administrative's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, motor vehicle mobile unit was supposed to be here in July, and they had to reschedule, apparently they couldn't get internet, so they weren't able to provide services to anybody. Uh, so now they have to reschedule at the library parking lot on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth. Which, uh, we agreed to, because that was the only day we could get for, for months. So, intro, and the sign up sheet is on our website. Um, somebody, high contact with the mayor and asked for your confirmation, they don't get a confirmation until it's full, so probably a few days beforehand, before the event, they'll get a confirmation saying that they're until it's full.
Are there multiple appointments at the same time?
I've asked them, I didn't get an answer, but I think, I think definitely bring more than one person, so I would hope so.
Yeah.
Because they said their people, you know, they're able to, I think they were able to do like seventy-five people in the four hour, so I'm coming in, and they have one.
I mean, I signed up, they have fifteen-minute increments slots, and when they're full, they take them off, so I don't know if yours, if even, you know, really, well, people can sign up for the eleven fifteen slot, let's say, or are they just doing the?
There's that's what, somebody asked and said, you know, that they knew other people that had signed up in eleven.
Yeah, but they said seven.
Yeah.
They said seven people, so I mean, I don't know, I mean, if you have coming.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes.
And you can't get the real ID.
You can't.
Oh, you can, yes, it's listed.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can publicize that, but that.
Like. The only thing, I, I had another, if you, you know, the announcement that's on our website, if you click on Real ID, because it has a link. It goes to finding a mobile, and we're not listed there, so somebody's like, hey, how come you're where you're not there? Now, I don't know if it's, if that's particular, or that they're there all the time in that town, or, I don't know, but it was confusing, if you click on the link on that first page, would you open it up?
Oh, it's okay, because I think, I think when we were, I think we were there for the time.
Yeah, we're not there.
They're in base and, yeah.
But yeah, you just click on the form, it's on the form, and you can check it on the form, yeah, it's just, don't, don't click on a Real ID asterisk there.
Right.
Because that'll get you nowhere.
Well, I mean, the last, I, the last they got back to me about a recall, they had a decent number of people who, you know, so I don't know if you remember, if they don't, if enough people show up, they'll cancel, so we have enough people to keep going, so that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm hoping, I mean, I know they did it at the library a few years ago, and they, it worked fine, I have to do their internet connection at the train station.
And, and it only will come to a town once a year, so that kind of. Is that, I think Christine, you had checked on that, right? Was it once a year? Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I think that's what it is, so.
Is there anything we need to do about the internet connection, or is it there, like?
Well, I think it's there, I mean, we have, we pay for internet there for, um, cameras.
Okay.
But they didn't ask us if they did, like, code up to that. And you'd think they'd bring like a hotspot.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they met the police chief and the county out there to look at it, because they have specifics about how big the spa has to be, you have to ask employees, the whole thing. And not, they never said anything about giving you an internet connection, so that's why I was really surprised when they got back to me the next day and said they couldn't, and they left. And, you know, so I, I think residents must have been, you know, really upset, because no, they were fine. And they're fine, and they're always fine, they're gonna work, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's.
Yeah, definitely. So, uh, I'll check out the link, but, uh, otherwise, I think we're good to go, I think we're about. Um, yeah. Second thing I just kind of mentioned, because, uh, I think you've seen, you might have this new report for Burner Avenue, the whole primary, the law company, and um, but I'm not gonna talk anymore about that, because I think it's in our report. Um, I'm very excited about this, we applied for and received, uh, from the federal government, um, permission to change our location dot com. So now instead of being Burnsville Borough, we have Borough dot org, now it's Burnsville dot com, so now we're official.
I know, I, I got on it yesterday that way, I was like, no, it works.
Oh, I told you about it.
No, you didn't, I, I just Googled it, and it came up dot com.
Oh, really?
For us, dot com.
Yeah, so now we're official. Um, but we, we didn't change the P D, they're still dot org, uh, but all the email addresses and the website all will be Burnsville dot com, but the old ones will still work in perpetuity, so if somebody accidentally sends it, so we don't have to change the business card or anything like that. If somebody accidentally sends it to Burnsville Borough, that, um, or it will still be forwarded. So, um, I know that the employees are having, when you have to spell out Burnsville Borough, nope, nope, no G H, it's B O R O. It's very confusing, so there's a lot easier. And apparently it's more secure when it's dot com. Um, okay, uh, uh, alright, so my last thing I have is, um, and this building that, it's the only one that's beautiful, I mean, it has character, right? Uh, but it was an old building from, uh, eighteen forty-three, and it's been used as municipal office since nineteen fifty-eight. Uh, it's been modernized, I think as much as it probably can, it's been expanded several times, but we are growing. And as we have discussed in numerous committee, subcommittee meetings and executive sessions, we have been considering moving administrative employees. Um, there are a lot of reasons for this, our play, that I think everybody has our two different locations now, uh, Rack and dining zone construction at the library, and uh, everybody else here, um. It's confusing for residents, and it's not really convenient for them, if we were in one location, it'd be like one-stop shopping for residents who can get their, you know, their, their, uh, cool registration, and, you know, pay your parking ticket, and, and, no, not pay parking ticket, I understand, because you have to do that in court, which is a benefit, but you could, you know, you could get a, a permit to put on a deck, and, and your full permit, and pay taxes all, and, you know, in one place. Um, since I've been here, I, I have people come in, you know, looking for Rack or whatever, and they're, they're just like, I'm not doing it, I gotta go to the letter. So, um, I, I have heard that people find it confusing, and they have gone from place to place, and so, um, it would be more convenient for residents, from my perspective, to have a more cohesive workforce in one place, makes a lot of sense to me. Um, I think it just allows for a better, you know, just a general, uh, overall better workforce. Um, but in addition to the administrative plays that are in the space, uh, the police have, are, are on their space, I know that we talked about one of the upcoming recruits who's in the academy now, a female officer, they had to clean out like a storage room to make a locker room there, because there's so much space. Um, so they're, they're overcrowded, uh, and because they are pursuing state tradition at some point in the near future, um, they're definitely need to make some other rooms, and so to have more room, if we did, you know, here, for the detectives and everything, things would be make a better, uh, department for them as well. Um, and finally, security upgrades, um, are very important, um, neither of the two facilities have uh, real secure, uh, insecurities measures and for employees, I think it's, I think it's helpful. So I think that had this, so as we know, we've been, um, negotiating an agreement at one fifty Morris Town Road, which is the large white office building on the border of Burn. Um, it is, uh, we would have three suites, which, um, are just over seven thousand square feet, it is the only office building in town that offers that much contiguous space. Um, so we, I believe that we have covered all the issues in the negotiation that needed to be covered, and so on September eleventh, I will be asking you to adopt a revolution to allow us to enter and to release, um, with the company to rent the space, and then they will retrofit it to me and R E, so, um, put counters, put, you know, plexiglass with counters, I've got various clerks and tax offices, and, you know, the various public facing, um, offices, it'll be more it'll be more like a town hall should be, it's not town hall, but it, at least, uh, at least three suites, three, but it will be, um. So they're gonna retrofit it, and I expect we'd be able to go in sometime in January, maybe, so that would be on September eleventh, December.
Uh, also, the meetings will still be held in this room, though?
Yes, sorry, I forgot to say that, there really is they, they, would not make sense to have them over there, um, it's just not, it's not set up for that, it's a office complex, you know, so it's not really set up, and we had this here show, and it's all set up with our you know, uh, audio visual, so it makes sense to do that. And people are used to come here for, for the meetings, anyway.
Yeah, I think one of the key things about it is the security and the safety of the employees, plus the fact that there's always somebody there, um, the way that, um, it's set up is if you walk in, you'll see every department, somebody there, so when you walk into this building, it's you never know where to go, you know, and it's, it's weird, who, this girl, this person, never. So I think the fact of having counters and plexiglass, and even. So I think the fact of having counters and flexi glass and even good security locks on the doors that we don't really have here.
Right. So we were, uh, talking about, you know, cameras. You know, we've got people who, a lot of people need all cash. Um, so it's good to have cameras and, and security, um, a locking system and, um. Because some offices are small, you know, one or two people offices, somebody's on vacation, someone's sick, it's hard to get coverage. So since everybody will be in the same area, it's easier to, you know, just go over to another one there. So it, it does, the signage and sign, they are really good signage, so that everybody's, you know, very clear where they're going. It'd be very open. So.
Yeah, I think it's time.
Did you happen to ask them about the sign, the thing sign?
Um, I didn't get a chance to call them yet, but we did talk about it, uh, when we were there, um, the last time. And I think it would be no problem at the first edge of the property. I think, I think it would be great. It's a nice sign.
And they'll finally get to use it. Yeah, it's good. Well, the big welcome to Burnsville signs that Kathleen Palmer had commissioned that are beautiful.
Yeah.
And the state would let us put them up.
Because it would be on the interstate right of it. This is private property, so I don't think that they could say no.
Yeah.
And they did talk about possibilities from, at some point about like more line, a line and sign for us, you know, like a big sign. Um, we have to pay for it, but, you know, I expect that. So at some point, but I think that the welcome to Burnsville is an easy one.
Yeah. But then we set the fun place for the second one.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
That was all I had. Thank you. All right, writing about motion to accept the department monthly reports. I made a motion to accept the department monthly reports.
Okay.
On there.
Hi. Hi.
Okay, we have our attorney's report. Do you have anything to add, Jack?
I do not, sir.
Okay. Uh, public safety. Um, we met on July seventeenth, uh, discussed the possibility of getting a flash in light at the crosswalk in Mount Yard Road and at Prospect. Uh, it's a county road and there are approvals required. Nancy, um, emailed the county engineer and they are reviewing the proposal. I'm assuming they can approve it. Uh, we discussed the two patrol officers that will be starting the academy beginning in October. Uh, we discussed the dispatch council, uh, council, uh, replacement cost estimate. And we discussed Burnsville, the surrounding street parking issues. The public safety committee will work with public works on solutions. Uh, we will be taking a look at the wording of the parking ordinance as it relates to overnight parking. And our next meeting has been rescheduled for, uh, well, sixteenth, Wednesday. Chad.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Um, finance.
Hey, everyone, hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep, okay, great. Um, we had a finance committee last Friday. Uh, we actually spent the majority of the time speaking about uh, financing the office space and the, um, that Nancy just articulated and walked through. Uh, looking at what the, the cost is going to be from a rent utility perspective, possible offsets that the borough has. Um, and ways that it'll impact our budget, um, over the course of the next few years. So uh, positive conversation. I think we, um, we provided some, uh, feedback to Nancy and Leslie, but uh, you know, for the most part, uh, the finance committee was very comfortable um, with fitting it within the, the budget and mindful of the budget goals and priorities that we have as a council. Uh, we also did talk about a possible shared services agreement with another municipality close by. Um, Nancy, I don't think I'm going to add much more than that because I think we, that's what we're going to talk about in closed session unless you say otherwise.
That's good.
Yep, so those were our two items.
Okay, thank you. Uh,
Thank you.
Organization development and personnel. Uh, we met on, um, what was it? Oh, August eighth. And, um, we also were discussing the, the shared service, which we'll continue in, uh, in private session. Um, we talked about moving the borough offices in terms of which employees are going to be where. Um, I think everything else is pretty much going to be an executive session.
Yeah.
So that's it for personnel. Um, public works.
Uh, public works met on July eighteenth. We, uh, were updated by Doug about Burner's app. So that's great news. The paving and current is done. Ninety-nine point nine nine percent done.
It's the brush that's through.
Yeah, and, um, so that took a lot of their time over the past couple of months. And people seem to be pretty happy about it based on what I've heard. The, um, rest of the items we talked about are those things in process. The dam is at the D and P for approval. Uh, the polo grounds, we're still, um, working on a finalization of the design for the pavilion. Um, the new, the update I'll give regarding trails is that we had some bad weather a few weeks ago. The famous tornado.
I haven't talked about it though.
The famous tornado that we had, um, has caused a lot of damage to trails, specifically Laurelwood, which is still closed. So if anybody's wondering why or has tried to hike up there, it's closed for a little while longer while we clean it up. Um, I also went to National Night Out.
Yeah, so you did.
And we got to see the helicopter. So if anybody, next year, that's really the only time you want to see a medevac helicopter is at that. So, um.
Remember last year, the medevac got called away on an emergency, so it didn't get there until.
And it came very late and.
Eight o'clock, yeah.
Um, that's about it then. What else?
Well, I mean, I'll wait until recreation.
Oh, right.
Uh, the recreation did not meet, oh, but, uh, but I, I do have more information about the tracks.
Oh, yes.
When the tornado, we think it hit down, but there are several extremely large school trees that are all converging in one spot, blocking the middle of the trail. Uh, I was out there with John McDowell and, um, the roads department has rerouted the trail to the left of the down streams because we thought it would be more cost-effective and safer to go around than to try to get rid of the mess in the middle. Um, right now, uh, they just, Nancy, they just finished that? Um, then the trails, maybe it's going to try to go out there.
Uh, they're not finished yet.
They're not finished yet. Well, as soon as they finish the trails, I mean, we're going to try to go out there and re-mark that section of the trail. And the trail is, has been closed. We've, it's been closed for a while, but we're going to leave it closed. Of all the construction materials and equipment is in the little parking lot there. And we're still going to mark, we have to mark it first. So it's going to be made closed until that's done.
So you can still use.
The other tracks, our other wonderful chairs are all open and you can still use those, um, for now. And, um, uh, housing, uh, met on the fourteenth, but there was nothing really due to report and we will be meeting again on the eighteenth. And each pack has not been. Any other liaison reports? Anybody need? No? Uh, the board of health, uh, need?
Uh, board of health met in uh, over a month ago. I'm not sure if I reported on it. I can tell you that at the meeting, just in case I didn't, the, the real discussion, which I brought up at council before, was increasing the fines for um, builders who ask for inspection and then don't show up when our inspectors arrive. Um, right now it's a hundred dollars and they're going to increase that to five hundred dollars because they've had a number of, um, no-shows where, you know, board of hea-, where health officials show up to do a septic inspection or something like that and builders and, you know, doesn't care and kind of blows it off. So, uh, that's pretty standard with other municipalities and other boards of health and, uh, I think that there was broad support about that, but there was just kind of one more final discussion at the board of health about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, library?
No, uh, library, um, they've met, uh, and we're meeting tomorrow.
I wanted to mention, um, what a great job the recs department is doing at, oh, there's so many events.
Yeah.
This weekend, they had a craft fair and that was great.
Nice.
And they are really killing it up there. So if you could, a lot of the events, you do not need a membership. So.
Yeah, they have the family.
Live music, craft shows, you name it, zumba, yoga, just keep your ears out.
I, I did.
For everybody.
Oh, yeah, it was good. There's one more.
Go to the church.
And there was an adult line too. That was fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was incredible. And there will be lots of stuff. Thank you for bringing that. Um, all right, moving on. Olivia, all activities and Wonderland Weekend.
Okay, hi everyone. That time of year. Hope you brought your Christmas hats. Uh, I'm just going to, it's just the, uh, the dates. So you guys don't have to scribble down the dates of the events coming up. Actually, um, some of the dates on, uh, some of the events on there, I will be bringing up at this point because we don't necessarily need to agree with those, but it's just so you know it's for your one. Um, I should have kept them for myself. I don't know them, but. Hopefully my voice is not completely out getting over something. Um, first to you, just to all of you, is the five K coming up on September seventeenth, sort of, uh, same, same, uh, course. Um, so the police are fully aware of that, uh, and we'll have a police station along the course. We did get some complaints last year, some folks went all the way, uh, when they were running. Um, so we are hopefully going to remedy that. Um, we've got the sign to be enough and the markings on the ground, but it wasn't. So, uh, we'll be adding some more horse marshals to assist with that. But, um, since all of those roads are rural roads, I mean, it's made for that, uh, event specifically there. The event is still going to be held at the high school, which, we're kind of the high school on that. Um, this event is now a great partnership event again with rec and also Mayor's Wellness Campaign. Uh, since we have a wellness fair in one, as well, which has been, last year was the first time we put them together and it was phenomenal. So we're really excited to bring that back. Um, just so you know as well, we are adding a one little doggy walk. So you bring your dog. Uh, and then a lollipop run for the kid eaten under, which will just be sort of a dash that, that, um, and then we'll, we'll shit that thing later on. But, um, those things will be added to this as part of our sanction run this year. Um, so that's that one. Uh, Haunted History is coming back. I know that was a big favorite for the community. Um, it's coming back on the fourteenth. My, uh, discussion with all of you is, uh, an addition to the event to make it a little bit more, just more, because every year we're trying to do a little bit more to add and enhance. Um, this year we have, I have actually spoken with a woman that owns, um, a mobile bar. She doesn't have alcohol on the bar. We would have to provide the alcohol for our guests. Um, so it doesn't have to be alcohol if that's the choice that it, it comes down to, but, uh, ultimately she has like a little horse trailer where she can have mixed drinks or whatever it is that we so choose. Um, and I have, um, for the A B C permit, I put together a map as well as narrative. I didn't want to raise a lot of A, so I sent the digital versions to Anthony. I'm happy to share with everyone, um, this one copy. Um, but the idea would be to have um, right by where the, uh, you know, the walk-in box where the train station is, over here, this like weird little hut, right? So directly in front of that would just be a sectioned off area where we, you know, have stanchions to, to section it off. Some bar top tables, maybe some benches for folks to sit. Um, typically what happens with Haunted History is people are supposed to come at least fifteen minutes before their scheduled tour time. Uh, we found that people were coming thirty minutes or more. So to have an amenity there, something that they can just sit, hang out, have a drink, whether it's alcoholic or not, thanks. Um, we thought it could be just a really nice addition. Um, and the, um, Danielle runs, runs mobile bars in love with Halloween. And so she's coming up with all these fun Halloween themed, uh, ideas as well. Um, so before I submitted the permit to A B C, I wanted to make sure everyone here is okay with that at the uh, train station space. And the rest of that area is set up in the state.
So that's like setting up like when you do it a fair, like a beer garden, so you close it off and you have to check ID kind of thing?
Yes. Um, the idea though is that kids will be able to come in, we'll have lemonade, we'll have, you know, water, a couple of snacks here and there because it's a very family-friendly event. So while it will be sectioned off, beverages other than a bottle of water will not be allowed. Um, we are also suggesting for A B C in control format is that the, uh, the patrons of purchase of glass, a member of the glass for a certain amount, they would get a drink taken or two, whatever's determined with that glass. Um, and then the glass is being used for their alcohol beverage. And if you're not having an alcoholic beverage, a different glass will be used. Now they can't actually take their alcohol beverage without. October fourteenth.
Yeah, because we do have orders, if you're hitting this alcoholic beverage on public property, you know, the US Council's got two exceptions. And we want to allow this, which is quite a fair.
What, what were the two exceptions? I'm sure.
The two exceptions are, um, the one in fire companies, companies of the pool and the libraries, wine and cheese parties at the library.
I remember the library, I didn't remember that.
Yeah, that was, the third one was the pool party.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so I, but I just wanted to bring that, so I, I'm a turner. What did I do, I didn't even know.
First, it's ours, maybe. First day in October, then it's a ten.
Oh, okay.
It's a Tuesday at four.
So we can introduce on December eleventh and then on Saturday, it's a government.
That's one thing, yeah.
So, okay, thanks. I didn't even know.
No, I didn't, but it's a process once. Not, but I can now then, so great.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, I didn't know that was part of the process.
I totally hooked up her little lady, very cute.
Oh, it's so cute, so cute. And she's really nice and she just makes it really enjoyable. The idea here too, and, and just for the record, um, it's most certainly never to take away business from any of the other businesses that serve alcohol, but simply to offset some of those businesses, some of the feedback I've received from our events is because they're so well-attended, it actually overwhelms the restaurants and it makes it challenging for them. Um, and we're not looking for people to have a raging party here. This is just a casual environment where they can come and go rather than quickly. Um, so I, one would hope that after they finish their tour, they go back to the restaurants and they enjoy, um, you know, a, a drink dinner or what have you, which they did last year. So, um, hoping this is a nice counter for that, about that as well. Um, there is a word mystery dinner event, but can't have it in Burnsville because we all know why. Uh, hopefully next year. Uh, the Trump or treat this year, um, I will say that we have some feedback from the businesses that the trick-or-treating portion around the downtown to the businesses is actually detrimental to their business. Um, everybody rushed them to get candy and then rushed them out. They were bothered buying anything. Um, so we're exploring an alternative option, perhaps doing the Trump or treat portion, which is obviously very, very popular uh, earlier in the afternoon and then doing something similar to what a ladies' night event was like. Um, you know, having shopping events going on in town, so then folks do trigger Trump or treating and then they can walk around town afterwards, but not remarking the businesses just to get candy. You certainly don't want to hurt the businesses by doing these events. We're supposed to help them. Um, so that's, uh, shifting a little bit. And I'll, I'll come, uh, another time as we determine an exact location for that.
Uh, that was my next question, does it have a place yet?
Uh, not yet. Uh, we would love to go back to Columbia Bay if they'll have us. Um, we are back and forth on scheduling a meeting to connect, so hopefully I can talk to them at the rest of the, so we'll be somewhere for that.
That was a good location.
It was great. Um, I'm concerned with the size, since there's always so many people in this event, the size has kind of, so I may talk to the library. Um, so we'll, we'll get back to you on location for that. Um, just to be aware, it's one of those Saturdays, always a big day. Last year we did a proclamation with the mayor and hopefully we can do the same thing again this year. Um, and last but certainly not least, our lovely Wonderland Weekend, which we are, um, looking forward to doing again this year for the, the three days and having all of the events. And hopefully the community will be welcomed and all of our community organizations, our schools, businesses, whomever to organize events as well, so that they can be part of the whole weekend of festivities. Um, we're here tonight for the parade. Uh, as, as usually we are. And last year we had this fabulous route to one two oh two, we can't really see from here, but we may remember it. Um, where we started at the Burnsville Center, which is fabulous staging place, uh, went down two oh two and then we went up to the high school. Um, so we can most certainly do this again. Um, however, I'm going to make just one final public attempt at the possibility of a collaboration. Um, because there's an issue always every year with, um, timing and conflicting events and folks that want to do one thing and then something else happens and blah, 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 whatever's going on. Um, so I'm just proposing a, a, a concept and hopefully everyone involved would be willing to collaborate with us to do something like this. Um, the idea would be to, uh, go through Alcat Square this year instead. Um, as we've seen in the past, and there's a giant picture right next to me, I'm sorry for everybody at home if you can't see it, of people gathering at Alcat Square, which is what we've been doing for more than a hundred years. Um, so it's a. Um, so it's a great place to be able to wrap up. A parade and start a tree lighting. Um, so I'm proposing here, which I can send to everyone, uh, the idea of starting a parade at five o'clock. Uh, parade lasts all of fifteen minutes. Uh, so you know, by about five twenty, we're all wrapping up, going around the corner, finishing in the library parking lot. Um, and then encouraging folks to go to the tree lighting, which would begin roughly around five thirty, and when that begins, usually it's. Um, you know, there's singers and there's folks gathering, people grabbing a chocolate, so festivities like that, that nature would start at five thirty. Um, and then any announcements of gratitude, you know, thank you for the uh, Lions Club to donate the tree, because they pay for it every year. Um, thank you mayor, thank you whomever else is there, et cetera, et cetera, and then finding a bigger button and pressing that button for the. Light up of the tree, um, after that, then around six o'clock, six fifteen. Alcott Square reopens to traffic for obviously vehicle traffic and everybody can go do what they normally do for a few weeks, so. Um, I am proposing this, now uh, we have determined, and I did bring it, I forgot it. Um, that it is up to mayor and council, we just have, as far, as far as it, when this is concerned, to determine. Uh, who organizes events throughout. The town, um, so you could tell us to just stop shop a hundred percent and we could just be done. Um, or you can encourage us to continue, whatever the case may be, so when it comes to the holiday events, it's ultimately your call. Um, so just wanted to propose that and be on a final note, because we tried to multiple times collaborating, uh, to do a tree lighting. Parade, something that made sense and it never ends up, ends up working out that way, so we would love to be able to try to do that on this time. Um, outside of that. And that's it, that's it.
That's a lot.
It is a lot, oh, uh, one, one other thing too, the decorations as well, I know the, the wreaths, whatever, you're, we are considering, um. Yeah, yeah, maybe add, or adding to that, or you know, coming up with something new or different, then we're looking at some whole garlands as well, so. If that's something that uh, we would love to continue discussing or entertaining, um, actually, we need to start ordering them. Believe it or not, um, so we can have them in time to get them up for holidays, so.
Is it, who puts up the wreaths, is that the road problem or is it?
I, we actually have no idea.
Yeah, no, it's not their department, but so I think that. I think Olivia Rich is a good point, I mean, you as a government body can decide if you want to designate one civic organization as what your. Uh, decorator, holiday uh, holiday center person, to me, I mean, they sent to me down a couple of years ago, or sorry.
It's okay, there's an adjustment.
I mean, it's what they do, you know, so it's up to you whether you want to do that or you just. Obviously, I haven't been here for holiday season, but it seems like it's a little disjointed and. You know, it'd be a very, very well organized and it seems like it might be a good opportunity to make things a little more. Streamlined and coordinated this way. I don't know if you want to talk about it.
It makes sense, but we've got. Um, the Lions Club that donates.
The tree.
The tree and the wreaths and so it's.
It's complex, so I think.
I, I have actually spoken with the Lions Club, um, and so they, they're really, um. All, all they want to do is just make sure that they can continue their mission. Um, so however, however it is determined what moves ahead, you know, they still want to be able to do what they do. Um, I think they deserve a lot more recognition, because I think a lot of people don't even know, A, who Lions Club is, so they do. Um, and B, that they actually donate the tree every year, so um, I, I think, I, I, I have to go with Lions Club, um, and, and they're open to whatever is determined. Uh, as long as they can do whatever they do.
I, I mean, I'm sorry, but I know like you're just hearing all this for the first time, so if you wanted to. Like Jack was saying, put it out for discussion for the next meeting and, you know, make a decision, if you wanted to talk through all the things, raise the issues. Between now and the next meeting, you know, I don't want to just like throw that.
Yeah, I think the thing, the biggest thing is getting that tree down.
Well, our ordinance does say that it has to be down by, uh, I forget the date is. Typically, I think as long as you keep it up for the. Uh. January sixth Christmas. As long as it stays up till then, pack the bag, figure it come down. It should come down, yeah, that's always been an issue, but since, I know it's been in the ordinance, but it never happens. Yeah, so uh, I mean, I think that's something that's easy to do, and it's a lot of trees, so it doesn't go back to anybody. So either we can take it and recycle it, you know, go out, you know, bring it to, up to the uh. Little hill, yeah, um, so anyway, I mean, it's just something that we can uh. Put like a list of, you know, issues together for you and if you have questions. We can talk about it at the next meeting. We can decide, I mean, like I said, I, I'm not trying, anybody who's donating their time or money or, or things, I don't think anybody's trying to. Um, tell them they shouldn't do that, I just think it just needs to be coordinated better, and if there's one focused. Person in charge or in charge, then it might help. Coordinate everyone.
Yeah, we're, we're in that same line, and we don't need to be, our, our table not need to be on every single thing, it's like the whole weekend. We encourage everyone to conduct an event of some sort during that weekend, give folks options, you know, they can go to wherever they like to go that weekend. Um, so it doesn't have to be us running everything or having a name on it, um, it's just, you know, the idea of. Start the parade and flow through and then do the next thing, you know, and all kind of work together, so. Uh, the fact that I already put a deposit on a Santa, um, believe it or not, has to be done at home, so, you know, I would love for that Santa to be the. Santa that's, that works for everyone, um, not just three or four Santas running around town around the same time frame. She gets a little nervous, I know my children would be nervous. So, um, but that is all, and uh, if there's questions or follow-up or any of that, I would be happy to discuss that, I think we're about to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience? Um, to go back to the mobile and the speed of fast, I just got, I tried to click the link for the Google form. And it says now that they're no longer accepting responses. Either they're full or maybe it just got too close, I don't know, so I don't know if we could ask. So I'll check tomorrow, let's see if it's full.
Right, yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. I have second opinion, this could be the DMV, but then you prioritize and announce the MVC. But it's not very bad. Um, okay, the meeting format, we have talked about, I think we mentioned this. Let me, okay, I'm trying to think where it came up, but we thought that maybe, was it the last meeting? Yeah, uh, to put this off till January. Um, just to, because you know, we may have. New council before or not, or, and I know, uh, Al had a travel schedule or planned based on our regular schedule, so, um. I think if you're, if the council's okay with that, we can start that in January, beginning of the year. Cause you know, I think we've got some stuff we need to kind of finish up this year anyway. Alright, so we will do that. Uh, correspondence, we did have a couple of people uh, about the sidewalk on, for example. Um. We don't really have, we don't have the engineer done on that, do we?
For the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, the sidewalk, no. Yeah. So I wanted, I was wondering what you wanted to do as far as meeting with the residents, you talk about me doing that.
Um, we're meeting next week in public, where, so what is going to happen?
Yeah. Yeah, because I think we talked about having another neighborhood meeting, or people that are. Certainly affected by it and maybe have the, uh, like we did last time, have the engineer there, so he can talk about how they replace things or.
Yeah, we thought about doing that or doing like individual.
Or, or both, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, like, there's a couple of residents, there's a few residents that are really. Affected, so we thought about maybe meeting with them in person and then maybe a public meeting, just everyone understands that, like we did for the road, which went really well. But.
Actually, we do the big meeting and then say, let everyone know that if they would like to discuss it further. We'll come and do that, yeah, cause I'd like everyone to hear from the engineer, because I think, you know, he's the most knowledgeable for the part of that, yeah, and then.
Well, like, we can always, I have a calendar on the Borough website that people can stay immediately in there, so we could. Use that kind of format and just say, uh, open it up to residents that are affected and they can just schedule their meeting. And they could even be virtual if they wanted, or in person, depending on what the reason for the meeting is. Sometimes they want to show us their wall or tree.
That's probably more, more likely what will happen, yeah.
So just to make it easier for Doug and John, because they're obviously get a part of the process. But we all get that, we're online.
Do we have a drawing of where the sidewalks are gonna go? Yeah, I can, we do, yeah, well, we had that one, you picked.
Kind of highlight, it's not.
Yeah, it's not really a, um. It's very bad, it's just like, hey, maybe it's to be, it's like a highlighted. Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm the third one, I'm gonna see that.
Probably this package from June, on July, maybe, maybe. But I think.
We can show the meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
But, um, for, for that one particular correspondence, did Doug or anyone else respond to it?
He worked new.
Ten C one.
Um. I don't think so, I mean, I just, I thought it was cute.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, I'm just saying.
Who's, who did you involve, which is right in the box? Oh, gone, gone, right. Oh. Okay. But she said Anthony. Yeah. Okay, I, I knew somebody, I, I know Doug's talked to her in the past, she's the, she's the president of the.
Yes, the whole owners association.
Yeah. Okay. Um, is there any unfinished business? Um, we do have some new business, we do have requests from the Somerset Hills Rotary Club. To put um, signs in Burnsville for the car. Uh, car show that the YMCA has. Uh, I believe it's the end of August, August twenty seventh, what's the date on? Yeah, uh, the reason normally that, you know, uh, they would just get approval from the zoning office, but because it's not a Burnsville group. Um, it comes to us, and I think we've done this before with some other groups, because it's. The Rotary is Somerset Hills, it's more than just Burnsville, but it includes Burnsville and the same thing with YMCA. So, but we have to improve it, um.
What's the date of?
I think it's the twenty twenty. Yeah, it's a.
It's all the twenty seven, three days at the.
It's, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's the Rotary, what does it say, Family Fun Fest in Cartham.
They, they want us to get permission for the Burnsville Center to shop, right? We can't even give them.
No, we can't do that, just. Yeah, it's just all class choir, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm okay.
Okay, good. Um.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Alright, thank you. And then we have another resolution, um, this is the municipal alliance. Um, and again, that appears to be in by. Yeah, so I just decided it's the application for the um, alliance for information, so.
I move the resolution twenty-three one sixty.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ramlin? Yes. Mr. Greenfield?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Amer?
Yeah.
Uh, and we do have another resolution, this, uh, also, I think, uh, we had asked the, um. The new uh, redevelopment attorney to recommend a. A financial group to renew new finances surrounding your redevelopment project, so this is authorizing them. Because we want to get this done before the end of the month as well, so, so we might look at that.
I move the resolution twenty-three dash one sixty-one, be adopted.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Amer?
I think I have to abstain from this. Another, because I work in, I'm neutral friend. So I'm just gonna ask, I mean.
Mr. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Ramlin?
Um, I will stand while, sir.
Uh, first, but we don't really have anything, we'll, we'll make something else. There. Um, and second, open session, so if anyone in the public has, um. Something they want to speak about, bring it, as you get it.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of the library, Brandon Daley, from, um, from Warner's Hall. And, um, we've been very thankful to the borough for their help with things like our leaky outdoor water and for finishing our biblical restrooms. It's been extremely helpful, I'm thankful. I also wanted to give a quick plug that, um, we've been reaching out to a lot of community partners, the schools and clergy and, and nonprofits. That we have ESL classes that are being sponsored by the county and the Greater Rare Workforce Development Board. I think I said that right. Um, they're beginning in September and they're intaking students for a whole year of a full course with a P A teacher, it's a really big deal. And, um, we're just trying to get the word out and have other partners that we can reach out to, please put me in touch with them. Um, we're very grateful to Clean Communities for co-sponsoring our summer reading finale on August twenty-sixth. That we're gonna have a big Bash of Trash concert, um, which you have to register for, then we'll have some activities in the ice cream afterwards, which. Uh, we have lots of people will attend. I was told this was going to be a quiet summer because everybody left town in July and August, and I found that not to be true. Um, and the other thing is that we'll be sending out invitations for, um, the library's annual, uh, September eleventh memorial, um. Pre-ceremony, so that will be all going up and, uh, thank you, that's a lot to say.
Yeah, and don't forget the foundation, does the fifty fifty go?
Oh yes, the foundation has been at the farmer's market, they have a fifty fifty going and they have a big raffle, they're only selling, um, a hundred tickets to the raffle. No, they're selling three hundred tickets to the raffle and they have three big prizes, so we hope they will check those out. Okay, thank you. Have you made sure to help with getting some information out about the ESL players? Oh, yeah, and also some, uh, maybe if you have like a poster of some kind or poster could be made to put in Marina's store.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can reach out to some of the businesses and the Greater Rare Workforce Development Board actually paid for and, um. Developed a website and just gave out, uh, flyers for it in Spanish and English.
Yeah, I think the travel store too, right, on. Yeah, travel was from the florist. Yeah, the travel, it was a couple, a couple, it starts down from.
Wait, I, I could travel. Yeah, I could travel. Yeah, and then of course some of the restaurants too, but yeah, I think the.
Oh, I can, it's right on your name. Can you go on the library page, they. I'll share it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then if you ever live in on Hammond.
Yes. Yes, they're doing it in weeks, um, and there, it's a basic ESL course, so it's basic English for people who haven't. Really learned much at all, um, it's for any native language spoken, uh, it doesn't have to necessarily just be Spanish language. Um, speakers that, um, they're going to start with the basic class that which will run all year. But there's also a push with literacy volunteers in America and then the library has their own tutors that we're working with for people that are. And then the library has their own tutors that we're working with for people that are for a real long-term range.
Okay, great.
And that'll be a little later in the year.
How many people can they take in the basic group?
I think they can take like twenty-five.
Okay. And is there, there's an actual like website where you sign up?
Yeah, there's a QR code on the flyer and there's a link on our website and I'll send it to all of you individually as well.
Great, great. This is just for students, uh, adults is it, adults?
It's adults, for adults.
Yeah, actually St. Burgers has the program at, um, with the YMCA for students. Cause tutoring for non-English speaking, or, you know, not their first language. English isn't their first language and that's been really successful, so. The more we can offer, the better. Um, anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Here, oh, Johanna.
Johanna Wessinger, I'm speaking for the environmental commission. I'd like to ask the council permission for us to participate in. The activities at the town, it's the new recreation. The environmental commission likes to piggyback wherever we can, to resitiate or be positive, so I'm not really showing up at full adjusted meetings, you know. So, uh, yeah, so I'd like to do the wellness, I'm sure applying something for environmental wellness and, uh. For the trunk or tray, we, well, we did the VAS last year.
Yes.
And, uh, yeah, we're thinking about doing a holiday palace for the. The Christmas parade, hopefully how that goes, uh, yeah, and, uh, just so that you know. Uh, we want to participate in the tree decorating at the, um, uh, Environmental Association Center. We're going to do, uh, decorations with recycled materials. So we're engaged in that, uh, so I just wanted to. So it's all right with you, if I just, wherever I can, try to get out there and.
Absolutely.
Maybe whatever.
Doug, you can wave your table.
Right. And, uh, just so that you know, I heard you talk about, uh, equipment for deer management. And, uh, we will not be doing bathing, bathing is, uh, not good. Uh, because it, uh, can breed, um, a disease. We've had two diseases that, uh, that's great, can circulate, so, yeah, we won't be doing that, so. We're on the same page.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we talked about the, uh, mayor's wellness day camp too, to add, um, earth wellness, you know, as well as personal wellness, so. Yeah. Anyone else? All right, I will close the public session. Uh, I guess now we have to do, uh, executive session. Bring it back out, since I don't believe so, all right, yeah.
I'll make a motion to move, to move to executive session.